All right, we will begin our regularly scheduled meeting. Today, May 2nd, 2016, of the City Council of the City of Crescent City. Is there anything to report out of closed session?
Yes, we do have action to report this evening on a motion by Councilmember Enscore, and seconded by Councilmember Murray. The council voted unanimously to reject the tort claim of Kimberly Evans and Jacqueline Evans.
Thank you. Okay, can you please do roll call?
Councilmember Hawley?
Here.
Councilmember Murray?
Here.
Councilmember Short?
Here.
Pro-Tim Enscore?
Here.
Mayor Gastineau?
And I'm here. And Mr. Enscore will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Ready and begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, first on our agenda tonight is a fallen officer's proclamation, and Councilmember Hawley is going to read that.
Okay, this is a proclamation from the City of Crescent City. Whereas in 1962, President John F. Kennedy signed a proclamation designated May 15 as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week in which that date falls as Police Week. On the average, one law enforcement officer is killed in the line of duty in the United States every 61 hours. Since the first known line of duty death in 1791, more than 20,000 U.S. law enforcement officers have made the ultimate sacrifice. Whereas, in 1977, the state of California started holding a peace officer memorial ceremony at the State Capitol to honor the officers who had fallen in the line of duty in the preceding year, recognizing their sacrifice and the impact on their family and friends left behind. California has lost 1,603 officers in the line of duty. California has also lost 33 K-9 officers, killed in line of duty-related deaths. Whereas, in 2015, 128 officers died in the line of duty protecting our nation, our homes, our families, and our way of life, leaving behind their families and friends to carry on without them. In 2015, the state of California lost four officers. Whereas, the City of Crescent City extends its condolences to the families of those who have fallen in the line of duty protecting us from evil. Now therefore, the City of Crescent City recognizes May 15, 2016, as the National Peace Officers Memorial Day and May 2nd as California's Peace Officer Memorial Enrollment Ceremonies Day. And the City of Crescent City also recognizes the outstanding services, service, excuse me, the Crescent City Police Department does for the city, and wishes the officers a safe patrol each night and day when they go to protect our city. Signed, Mayor Ron Gastineau.
Thank you. Chief, do you want to say any words?
I've attended the national ceremony in Washington, D.C., as well as the ceremony in California, and it's probably one of the greatest honors to attend, but also one of the saddest ones. So far, in 2016, 33 officers have died in the line of duty protecting our nation, our families, our home. It's no easy job out there, and sometimes officers can believe that they're those unsung heroes. So to the men and women of law enforcement throughout our country, and I may be a little biased with this, but the men and women of the Crescent City Police Department, I thank you for your proclamation, and thank you for your support as we go through the rest of this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. We'll get that over to you. Okay, next on our agenda is the Municipal Clerks Week proclamation, and I will read that. This is a City of Crescent City proclamation. Whereas, the Office of the Municipal Clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government exists throughout the world, and whereas, the Office of the Municipal Clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas, the Office of Municipal Clerk provides the professional link between citizens, local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels, and whereas, municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, and whereas, the municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community, and whereas, municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the Office of the Municipal Clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and annual meetings of their state, province, county, city, and international professional organizations, and whereas, it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the Office of Municipal Clerk, and now therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Crescent City, do recognize the week of May 1st through May 7th, 2016, as Municipal Clerks Week, and further extend appreciation to our own Municipal Clerk, Kimmy Scott, and to all Municipal Clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. Signed, Mayor Ron Gastineau. Thank you very much. Ms. Scott, would you like to say anything?
Just thank you, guys, for the recognition, and it's a great job. It's got to be one of the most interesting jobs in the world, and I love coming to work every day, so, thanks.
Awesome. Thank you very much. We appreciate you every day that you are there. Okay, on to our consent calendar. We have three items on that. Number three, approval of the regular meeting minutes from the April 18th, 2016 council meeting. Receive and file the warrant claims list for the period April 9th, 2016, through April 22nd, 2016. And on number five, receive and file the biweekly payroll reports for the period ending in April 16th, 2016, paid on April 22nd, 2016. Is there any public comment on our consent calendar? See, no public comment. Close it back and bring it back to the council.
I'd move to approve the consent calendar as a whole.
One second. Okay, we have motion and second. Could you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Hawley?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Pro-Tim Enscore?
Yes.
Mayor Gastineau?
Yes, thank you, and that passes unanimously. Hey, we're now on to reports and presentations, and number six is a presentation by Jeff Harris, the DNUCSD Superintendent, that's the Delnor Unified County School District Superintendent, regarding early literacy, which I didn't pass because I can't read. Mr. Harris?
We have tutoring available. That's a little scary. So let me start by saying, thank you for letting me come and share this. I know this has been something that's been discussed in this county for several years now. And as we're dealing with early literacy, one of the things that struck us early on this year was, we give an assessment called the Kindergarten Readiness Survey. In the kindergarten readiness survey, we found that 66% of our students that were coming into kindergarten for the first time were not meeting the minimum requirements and readiness for kindergarten entrance. And that looks at social, emotional, some literacy, some numeracy. And as we looked at that, and then we looked at third grade reading scores for the past three years, our third grade reading scores for the past three years haven't really gone beyond 50% on grade level. So in taking a look at what programs, what processes needed to be put into place to meet the needs of our students, we were thinking, okay, so what is really the underlying factor? We know that we can put as many resources on the table as we can. We can have high-quality teachers, we can have high-quality curriculum, we can have pull-out programs, we can do anything. But out of those 66% of our students that aren't ready for kindergarten, 41% of them statistically will never be on grade level with their peers. Doesn't matter the high quality of intervention that's provided. So we said, what are those underlying factors? We have to address the root of the issue, not just continue to address the symptoms, because otherwise, we're going to spend millions of dollars, thousands of man-hours, and really waste the promise of thousands of kids over the years. So last semester, we worked with Building Healthy Communities, the School Systems Implementation Team, to develop an empathetic study. It's an ethnographic study that comes in, and we actually go out to homes, and we dig into where students and their families are. We brought in a group from New Zealand called Think Place. They had just finished doing a systems reform of the foster system in New Zealand. And so we structured this research process where we looked at families across the spectrum of Delnor County. We actually looked at 27 families. Ten were Native American, three were Hispanic, one Hmong. There were 26 females, five males, 10 female educators, one male educators. We looked at people in family, home care, preschool, Head Start, state kindergarten, and multiple grade levels. So, and different economic levels. So we thought, we want the full picture as much as we can. It's not a statistically valid research study, but it is an empathetically and ethnographically valid study. So in looking at this, we said, what are we finding? And basically, what we found were families functioning in our county at five levels. One level, and I think this is the level that we think a lot of families function at, which is the aspirational level. And at this level, these are families who are typically college-educated, they know what they want for their children, they know how to kind of get there, they may have a few questions, but, you know, that's kind of the family that a lot of times schools are structured to serve. The next level of family that we had was the practical family. They wanted some basic day-to-day necessities taken care of, a safe place for their kids to play, to go to school. They wanted, safety was a big concern. They very much trusted what schools were doing. They assumed that what their children were learning in school were getting them by. And in most cases, that was true. You know, these were still our A and B students that were plowing along, and a lot of these were still kids that were functioning pretty well. Then we had our families that were kind of just getting by. And in these families, they weren't as well-educated, but they had high hopes for their kids, but they had very little knowledge about how to reach the brass ring that education offered, the goal for each child to do well. One thing I'll point out right off the bat, out of all the families and children that we spoke to, not one family said that education didn't matter. You know, that was the one thing that I think really came out. There were some expectations among some of the larger group that education just may not be important to some families, and that wasn't the case with one person we talked to during the study. So that was massive. Another family, type of family that we talked to was a family that we considered kind of a struggling family. They were really trying hard, but they were literally one event away from drastic consequences, from a medical issue, from a financial issue, from losing their home, from losing their car, or, you know, whatever it happened to be. But these were struggling families. And then we had our drowning families. And these are families that are just so overwhelmed with life in general that education, while it may have been important, was just almost unattainable as far as even a conceptual goal for what they needed. So as we looked at our kids, we said, what does it really take to reach out to the families to make sure that from the time that child is born until that child is ready to go into kindergarten, we're meeting the need not only of the child, but of the family that's supporting that child. In the first two years, that's when the brain is growing the most. By age four, we're expecting some social and self-care that the child is able to do. And yet, remember, 66% of our kids walking in the doors, five-year-olds, aren't able to do it. So what this showed us was that there was a significant need for interventions much earlier than kindergarten. So on June 7th, at Elk Valley Community Center, from 5:00 to 8:00 o'clock, we're going to be talking with other community leaders, with business leaders, with nonprofits, for-profits. We're going to talk about what does it really look like when a community, and a county, and a school, and everybody come together to support the needs of our most vulnerable families and kids, to make sure that every child has the first step in the right direction the day they walk onto a school campus, that they are ready to take that next step into literacy, and by the end of third grade, which is one of the largest predictors of the ability to graduate high school on time. You guys have heard the statistics. If they're not on reading, on grade level, in reading in third grade, they are 50% more likely not to graduate high school on time. So instead of condemning half of our kindergarten class to that fate, half of our third-grade class to that fate, what can we do to move them forward? So we'd like to invite you all to that event. We have a much longer report that details a lot of the findings that came out of this, and what we're not going to do, and we've all talked about this, this is not come and we'll tell you what needs to be done. This is let's come, let's discuss the problem, let's, from all of our perspectives, what can we do to support? So, that's all I have. So any questions?
I think June 7th's Election Day.
I know. He rescheduled it to Election Day. I have one comment. I just wanted to say, again, what a fantastic presentation you did at the Economic Summit.
Oh, thank you.
That was, it was really wonderful. So thank you for being there. It was very impressive. And this little information sheet is really helpful, too. So thank you for that, too.
Sure, my pleasure.
You touched on it a little bit, but just for the folks that are listening in, could you tell us what factors are involved when you're talking about a kindergartner that's not ready for kindergarten? I think people often think that kindergarten is to get ready for first grade, that's when school starts, but that's not correct. So I just, I hope you could expand on that a little.
No, it's actually quite a comprehensive assessment that we do, and it's not paper-pencil test for a child to walk in the door and start asking them to do math or written language. But it really is looking at, can they recognize certain letters? Do they know certain sounds? Can they count to a certain level? Do they know colors? Do they know shapes? Do they know what it's like to take care of themselves? Do they know what a healthy food is versus a non-healthy food? Like, you know, which is better for you, banana or a chocolate bar? And depending on your benefit, that may be different. But, so we ask a lot of those kinds of questions to gauge where a child is. It takes quite a bit of time to do this, but we did it with all 300 incoming kindergartners this year. And again, just to point out the statistics, and I mean, this is the scary part. Out of 300 kindergarten kids, 200 of them did not rise to an 80% level on the assessment in all of those categories combined. So again, and I don't have that with me right now, Darren, but this night, we'll have that data available, and we'll be able to show that in very much more detail.
That was very helpful. Thank you.
And one thing, oh, I'm sorry.
I was just wondering, Jeff, this is really interesting stuff, and it makes lots of sense to me. But did transitional kindergarten make a difference when that came in? I know that you've gone to traditional, or transitional kindergarten.
Well, you know, transitional kindergarten is one of those misunderstood pieces of education. Transitional kindergarten happened a couple of years ago when the kindergarten start age went from December 2nd, five years at December 2nd, back to September 1st. Transitional kindergarten was not really a method of increasing education. It was really a manipulation by the legislature to help a district continue to gather the ADA for those students. Now, the educational benefit that we have, though, is TK is the first year of a two-year kindergarten program. So transitional kinders not required, but this year was the very first year that we've actually run a solid TK class, a TK-only class. So, and we didn't really have the TK curriculum. There isn't curriculum in the state for transitional kindergarten, and it is separate from kindergarten. So a lot of districts have been making that. This coming year, we're going to be offering two specific TK classes, one at Joe Hamilton, one at Pine Grove. We'll also have probably some TK combo at Mountain Smith and Keating. But we'll have curriculum, too. So we'll see how that plays in to what happens with the kindergarten assessments. So, but we probably won't know that until the beginning of next year.
One more thing, not all parents of the zero to five will be able to be at this workshop on June 7th. So one of the solutions for helping their youngsters would be maybe preschool or school readiness programs, and they can call one of the school district offices and talk to someone about enrolling their children, perhaps. It would be of help if they heard about this, and then they panic and think, what do I do for my little zero-to-five-year-old, or go to the Family Resource Center and things like that.
So actually, two parts to that, Catherine. The June 7th meeting really is for systems leaders, community leaders, because that's going to be kind of coming up with a countywide discussion around solutions that we can roll out to specifically our parents and other stakeholders. If parents do have questions about getting their children into preschool, in our county, we have Howland Quett Head Start, we have the UROC Head Start, we also have state and state preschools and head starts within the school district, and then there are a variety of very good quality private preschools through Delnor Child Care Council. So in Family Resource Center is a great way to reach out and get information. We're also going to be reaching out through radio, newspaper, potentially TV, to help parents with what does it look like to be kindergarten-ready, because that's an easy fix, I think, that we as a district can do, that I'm not sure that that outreach has been done in the past.
I just caught you just briefly last Friday, but one of the things I was thinking about, Jeff, as you were giving your presentation at the Economic Summit, and then again tonight, is when, thinking about those stakeholder groups, is also looking at reaching out to our faith-based congregations here, because many congregations here touch children every week, in their Sunday school programs and so forth, and providing some key resources to teach. There's no reason why you can't be teaching shapes and colors, right along with teaching the religious content that goes with that. And if we have an opportunity, and speaking as a clergy member, to benefit our community and our education program, I really, really think it's important that we encourage our congregations to get on board and see the value of building a partnership with our education system. So I thank you very much for...
Absolutely. And love to speak with anybody who wants to. I mean, a lot of my family, we learned a lot of what we did in Sparks and Owana, and you learn memorization, you learn all those different things. I mean, it's a wonderful, wonderful program.
Well, I'd like to see you give a short presentation, even just like this, at every one of our congregations in Delnor County, and build a sense of partnership that says, help us, help you, give future to your children. So thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
If I can say one other thing?
Yes, please.
And this is probably more public comment than it is presentation. I just want to say, Kimmy Scott has done a phenomenal job representing this city and this council with the Find Your Part initiative that's going on. Could not be a better representative in the public than Kimmy has been these last few months. So I just want to say publicly, thank you to Kimmy for all her work.
Yay. What a good segue, because now we're into public comment period. Let me read my stuff. Any member of the audience invited to address the City Council on any matter that is within the jurisdiction of the City of Crescent City. Comments of public interest or on matters appearing on the agenda are accepted. Note, however, that the council is not able to undertake extended discussion or act on non-agendized items. Such items can be referred to staff for appropriate action, which may include placement on a future agenda. Any comments that are not at the microphone are out of order and will not be part of the public record. After receiving recognition from myself, please state your name and city or county residency for the record. Public comment is limited to three minutes. Is there any public comment? Oh, Richard, please, come on up.
My name's Richard Miles. I'm a resident of the city. Recently, in a pilot in The Oregonian, it talked about Grants Pass, how Grants Pass was given, for overall livability, a B grade. Unfortunately, I look around my city lately, and I'd give it a D. And I want to give you some examples that I think this city council, your blight officer, your city maintenance people could resolve. If you go downtown, and you look in the tree wells, unfortunately, there's weeds this high and so on. Your city ordinance says it's the responsibility of all property owners to take care of their weeds. weeds. The other day, a friend of mine named Billy Kay cleaned out her tree wells. She's only one person, one business owner, but she took pride in her business to do something. Unfortunately, there was a little other business that don't give a damn. I think notices should be sent to them through your code enforcement officer. Also, there's areas, and one of them will be the site of our farmer's market. You need to go down there and look. It needs a lot of work before June the 1st to make it presentable. Unfortunately, that takes away from your parks department. And they're so busy mowing, mowing the grass and getting ready for the fourth, they don't know what, ah, end is up. I'd like to make a suggestion.
All right. Make it quick, Richard.
Okay. It's my understanding that I have to, well, I'll speak about that later, but there may be $900 floating around. Here's my suggestion. I think you should give that $900 to the divas to hire somebody to go in there and get that area ready for June the 1st.
All right. Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Okay. Seeing no other public comment, we will close it, and we are on to item number seven, which is the fee schedule update. Mr. Knight?
Thank you, Mayor Gasino. Council members, our accountant Linda Leva, Linda Lieber is here tonight to give this presentation.
Ms. Lieber, come on up.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. This is the annual review and update of the city's fee schedule. The fees and charges on the fee schedule are those that are paid by the individual who uses a specific service. The city's fee schedule is reviewed every year to ensure that the charges are reasonable and adequate to recover the city's cost of providing service. Based on this review, staff has recommended several changes. They are listed in your packet with the proposed fee and the reason for each change. I will briefly go over the highlights. Some fees are proposed to increase by CPI, which is the Consumer Price Index. This is an estimate of the increase in our cost due to inflation. The annual CPI factor for this year is only 0.1%, so these changes are very minimal. In the planning department, we propose adding a schedule of permit fees. These are not new fees, it's just a new presentation. In the past, permit fees were listed as depending on project specification, and we're just proposing to add those specifics to the schedule. In the utilities department, there's also a recommendation to change the presentation for the water and sewer fees. In the past, we have listed the specific water and sewer rates in the fee schedule each year. However, the fee schedule is only updated in May of each year, and water and sewer rates are set by ordinance, so they could be changed at any time. Excuse me. In order to avoid any possibility that the fee schedule on the website might be different from an ordinance adopted later in the year, we're just recommending that we take them out of the fee schedule and include a reference to the ordinance. One other change in the utilities department relates to customer deposits. The purpose of a deposit is to protect the city from loss if there is an account that is not paid. After reviewing our deposit structure, we're recommending a couple of changes. For residential accounts, the current deposit is listed as $250. For accounts that use both water and sewer, that's a reasonable amount. But for residential accounts that use water only, $250 is just too high. We recommend $100 deposit. For commercial accounts, the current deposit is $1,000. It was thought that a flat rate would be just a more streamlined way to do that. But with commercial accounts, because there's different classifications and it depends on the usage, a flat rate structure just doesn't work very well. We would like to change that to being two and a half times the average monthly bill for that location. That way, if you're a very small business owner who maybe just has a little bathroom, you don't have to pay $1,000 deposit. We'd also like to recognize that customers with a good payment history represent a lower risk of loss to the city. So, we would like the authority to waive the deposit if a customer can show that they've had an account in good standing. In the pool department, the pool manager is requesting a change to the current policy, which allows children under age seven to swim for free. The request is to charge a $2 fee for children ages three to six, and no charge for children up to age two. So, what we're requesting tonight is for you to take public comment and approve the resolution adopting the proposed fee schedule, and I can take any questions that you have.
All right. Any council questions from Mrs. Lieber?
I just have some questions. So, all the, all the fees were, well, the majority of the fees were adjusted by the CPI of .1%?
Yes. In most cases, that's an increase of about 25 cents.
I, I just looked at the, because I, when you pulled up, when you were mentioning about the pool, I pulled up the, the pool things, and, and the increases that are there look like they're, they're, they're not .1%, they're even higher, they're significantly higher than even the 1.6 that we approved last year. So, I, is there, was there a different CPI used for the pool, or did, because it identifies it as CPI in the, in the reason for change, and if the CPI is .1%, then those numbers don't match.
Right. The, the pool fee schedule was structured a little differently. The CPI was applied to the daily pass, and then the, like, the 10-session pass and the 50-session pass are built off of that. So, I believe that 10-session pass, you would get 10 swims, and one of them is free, so we take it times nine. And then for the per-hour fees for the pool, those are not by CPI, those are actually based on an analysis of the operational cost to keep the pool functioning with lifeguards for that hour.
Okay. I guess I'm confused, because on the, under the daily sessions, it shows no change for 50, no change for, and then for adults, $5, no change. And then for the 10-session, the addition of $1.50, that's not .1%, but it says CPI. So, I guess I just, I'm trying to figure out what, what percentage was used to, to set that number, and if we're going to put this into our fee schedule and say it's by CPI, then 36 to 37.50 needs to match what we're identifying as the CPI.
Okay. I understand.
So, I, I don't, I'm not saying that, that raising it is wrong, but, but if we say it's based on CPI, then I would think that the math should, should add up. I don't, so I don't know what, I don't know what factor was used to determine that, those, those adjustments.
If I may ask, Matt Hildebrandt is here to answer questions about the pool fees, if that's okay?
Yeah, no, that's, it's great. No, I, thank you.
I can try to explain. It's, this has been kind of a multi-year thing, so it probably shouldn't have said, it probably said by CPI from the previous year.
Okay.
So, what we were doing was adjusting, like Linda was saying, the idea is that when they buy a pass, they're getting one visit free. So, that's how we're trying to structure it. And then, as far as the rental fees, this has been going on for several years, trying to get up to that $100 an hour that it costs to operate the pool. So...
I, and I'm not, if, if staff's recommendation is that we need to adjust, like, the 10-pass thing from 36 to 37.50, I'm fine with that. I just think if we, if we're going to make the notation, we don't need, if the reason...
Right. That notation shouldn't be there.
Take the CPI out of there so that there's not that confusion. I realize that it's a struggle every year to, with the budget at, at the pool. I just don't want people coming back and saying, well, you said it, you're only raising it .1% or less than 1%, but pool went up way more than that. Well, there's a reason for that. And I do appreciate the fact that, that there are no changes in what we're charging to, like, our swim clubs and these groups that use the pool. I mean, their, their rates are not going up.
Every, yeah, all those groups are staying the same.
Which I know that they appreciate.
Masters and swim club and physical therapy and all that is, is staying, we tried to keep, most of the fees are staying the same, but we needed to adjust...
Okay.
The, the pass, the passes to...
I appreciate that. Thanks for that clarification. I just, would just recommend that we correct...
Well, in the analysis, though, it says the majority of the fees were raised by this 1.6% CPI. And the CPI factor...
That was last year.
It says, no, in the analysis on page seven, it says the majority in 2015.
The 1.6 was, was last year.
But, but we're talking about, it's a, you know, that we're recommending increasing many fees. It's not talking literally about every one of the fees. It says many fees. It says, city staff again recommends increasing many fees by this year's CPI. So, it's not talking literally about every one of the fees that we're bringing.
I understand that. It, it, it gives the reason for the change in the pool fees as CPI. That's, that's all I'm...
Yeah. We just need to read them.
That spreadsheet can be adjusted and changed for that rea, and there's no problem. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Do you think the, the swimmer usage will go down with that change to the young children? I, I don't think a lot of young children are going with the parents, but...
Well, at the Saturday family swim, there's several young kids that go. I don't, all the increases we've done, excuse me, over the years, I haven't seen a big decrease in attendance, and so I'm not expecting a big decrease.
Just was curious.
Yeah.
It's, unfortunately, how much it costs to do business at the pool for the city, we're still putting in, what is it, like, almost $250,000 of general fund money per year, because we don't generate enough revenue.
Right.
Unfortunately, it costs a lot of money to run the pool, and the city has to put in $250,000 a year, because we don't charge, we can't, we can't charge enough money for the usage of, you know, in fees.
Right.
So...
And most swimming pools do charge for that age group, so it's not an unusual thing, it's, it's common.
Thanks. Thank you. Any other comments, questions?
Just to comment, I'm glad we're not moving the rental to the cultural center up, and based upon some of our prior conversations regarding the cultural center, that was sensitive. So, thank you for leaving that right there.
I do have a question about sewer connection fees. Our single-family residential equivalent hookup fee is $9,682. Paying for the same fee in Brookings will cost you $2,700. I'm wondering where we, why we, or how we could justify almost a $10,000 hookup fee, or if we would consider changing that.
Through the mayor, the Public Works Director and I have talked at length about these charges, and we want to, it's, it's come out of an earlier study that I'm not privy to from many years ago. Eric, we're the Public Works Director, and I have, again, committed to looking at this very closely. It wasn't in time for this fee schedule, and of course, we're also working on operational or, or user fees at the same time. So, we want to get at that conversation, but these have been in place for a long time, and I, I believe we, we need to do a little more study to make sure that we bring something back with some good, solid stuff to, you know, support our recommendation. So, we are looking at that at a staff level. Not in time for this, though.
Are those changeable through ordinance with the other sewer fees?
Yes, they are.
All right. So, we can get to those about any time.
Thank you.
It is a discussion I'd like to have.
In, in some prior discussions regarding those fees, it was my understanding that those did go up significantly with the building of the new plant, and the interest was to try and keep the other costs of the current users down. So, there was an offset, they may have taken on more than, than they wanted to, but they, they didn't want to, since it was such a large increase anyway, they wanted to do it, they couldn't mitigate that.
Would you like to have a meeting with the Public Works Director and Mr. Knight?
I, yes. Yes, I would.
Can you make that happen, Mr. Knight?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. To the council, again, your staff has identified this as an issue that we want to get at, but we want to get at it with good information.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Is there any other discussion, questions? Okay, we're going to open us up to public comment. Public comment's limited to three minutes. Please come on up, identify yourself and as a city or county resident. Mr. Miles?
My name's Richard Miles. I am a resident of the city. I have made this argument in the past and was shot down. I'm going to make it again. I've had three knee surgeries. Part of going through that process is my surgeons have assigned me to a physical therapist. They get a group of people through private insurances, in my case Medicare, and they take them to the pool for the hour for physical therapy. It's my argument that the city is subsidizing these therapists with the, yeah, city is subsidizing them. I mean, they charge the private insurance a pretty good lump of change, and they short charge Medicare a pretty penny, too. I think that they should be, if it costs $100 an hour to run the pool, they should be paying more. That's, you know, if the pool is kind of a leadstone around the city's neck, these people need to be kicking in their fair share.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment on the fee schedule? Okay. Seeing no other public comment, we are going to bring us back to the council, and our action tonight, are we accepting, or is this...
I believe the language was adopted, the resolution is, and it has a resolution.
Great. Okay. Is there any other discussion at the council? No? Do I hear a motion?
I can't find it. There it is.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2016-11.
I'll second. I'll second. Okay, do we need a full reading on that?
It would be good.
A resolution, the city council, the city of Crescent City, California, establishing certain fees and increasing certain existing fees for various city services provided by the city of Crescent City.
I still second. All right, we have a motion in a second.
There's just, just a little discussion. Should we just make that notation that we're going to take the CPI off of the pool fees?
Oh, yeah, with the, with the change to the spreadsheet for the pool CPI. Do we need to put that into the motion? Or would it be a staff direction?
I don't think it's-
I don't think it needs to be a part of the motion.
All right, great. Okay, we do have a motion in a second. Could you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Pro Tim Inscore?
Yes.
Mayor Gassman?
Yes, and that passes unanimously. Okay, we are on to continuing business. Item number eight, downtown divas funding request for farmer's market expenses. Mr. Knight?
Yes, thank you again, Mayor and council members. I know the council is very versed in this topic. But for the benefit of those who might be listening, I'm gonna do just a real brief background and then get to the meat of the requests. So as council is aware, the business improvement district was established by ordinance in nineteen ninety-three and then amended numerous times after that period. Section five point one hundred point zero six zero establishes the purpose and use of the assessments, which is important to this discussion. Basically, that section provides those monies collected. How they're collected can be used for a purchase and construction of capital improvements within the business district, promotion of activities within the district that support economic revitalization, create jobs and attract new business, and then also could be used for insurance coverage. So on, and this point, I left out of your staff report, I noticed when I was going back through here, but on December seventh, twenty fifteen, the city council adopted resolution number twenty fifteen fifty-nine, declaring the suspension of activities and the levy of the assessments. The council came back on December twenty-first, twenty fifteen, and followed up by adopting resolution number twenty fifteen dash sixty-six, basically declaring the allocation of the remaining bid fund balance, which is what we're here to talk about tonight. And in that resolution, in summary, it included about thirty-five-hundred dollars would be set aside for farmer's market. Outstanding bills would be paid, remaining funds would be used towards the downtown speaker system, and the Christmas tree would be retained by the city. And other items held in reserve would be passed over to the organization that takes over the farmer's market. And again, I think that's what we're gonna be talking about here in just a minute. So on March twenty-first, twenty sixteen, a group of seven local business owners who reverted themselves as the downtown divas gave a very nice presentation to the council regarding returning the farmer's market down in that same bid area. And also talked to the council that they were in the middle of attaining their nonprofit status, which would make them, could make them eligible for these funds. So on April twenty-first, the downtown divas did provide a written request to the council and the mayor. And in that request, in summary, they did, they did let us know that they obtained the nonprofit status. They planned to open the farmer's market beginning June first and have it run through October twenty-sixth. The market would be open Wednesdays from nine AM to two PM. And in that request, they specifically asked for four thousand dollars in the remaining bid funds to primarily support the farmer's market. The ways that they would do that would be to pay for insurance, pay for some promotional activities, and purchase of some new signs, tables, chairs, and kind of refurbish the market house. In addition, the downtown divas also asked for some of the materials that we have stored in the courtyard. And I'm sure we would love to get out of the courtyard. But that was five market signs, two sets of tables and chairs, and two market flags, and then, of course, the market house. So staff reviewed the downtown divas' request and believe it is substantially consistent with resolution twenty fifteen sixty-six and consistent with the intent of the ordinance that was established, that established the district. Attached for council's consideration is resolution number twenty sixteen dash twelve, which would authorize, if approved, the staff to transfer the four thousand dollars in bid funds to the downtown divas to support the farmer's market expenditures described in their letter and resolution. And then finally, authorize staff to provide the divas with what we have in our storage that I just talked about. So with that, staff recommends council adopt resolution number twenty sixteen, allocating a portion of the bid fund balance and assets of the suspended business improvement district for use in association with the downtown farmer's market by the downtown divas. And that concludes my brief report.
Thank you very much. Before I open up the council, anybody from the downtown divas would like to speak? No? All good? All good. Okay, discussion with the council?
Any discussion? Comments?
Well, welcome. I'm glad you're here, downtown divas. And I'm really excited to see that you got your nonprofit status and that you're ready and raring to go with the farmer's market. So congratulations and good work. Good job.
One question. If there's a male business owner, can he be a diva? Dudes, okay.
Nice.
And you, you also did a great job at the economic summit too, in your presentation. Couple of you were up there, so good job at the economic summit too.
The divas and dudes. Okay, is there any other discussion?
I just, I wonder about our speaker system downtown. We were kind of in agreement that that needed to be fixed or upgraded. I wonder if that money has been spent. Is that complete?
That's been in the plan. Did we, did Fritz ever look that over for any cost on that? I remember I did it when I was part of the bid board a long time ago, that we looked at downtown speaker system.
I do not have an estimate for that, and I'm not sure if Fritz has actually looked at that or not. But that is something I plan to walk with the public works director and look at the area where the farmer's market is gonna be and discuss what we might want to bring back to council for consideration. I'm not sure the balance would cover it, but I could come back with better information in the future.
All right, yeah. When I was, when I was looking at it, it was stadium speakers like they have. Because that'd be all-weather.
Right.
Have to be out there and connected.
I was just kind of under the impression that it was gonna be a relatively small chunk of the money that's left over. Still leaving plenty for the divas to, to run the farmer's market. I was just curious how that was going. I know I've heard visitors say that hearing the speakers downtown was, was neat. So we definitely wanted to keep that up. So that's the only question I had. Certainly not against what we have here.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion? Public comment. Anybody wish to make public comment? Mr. Miles, come on up.
Is his microphone on?
Thank you.
Go ahead again.
No, you get it.
Okay. I read this little document just a little while ago. And one thing the farmer's market does, and I don't think a lot of people realize it, it promotes tourism. I have witnessed myself, because I use the farmer's market and the services of ocean farms, to buy some veggies. Mainly, I'm a meat and potato man, but little greens once in a while, especially rough each. We all need it. I would hope that you will grant this money to the divas. And I would hope you could find some other monies in your tourist dollars to do two things. There used to be banners. And somehow, over the years, those banners have gone by the wayside. There used to be a banner welcoming people to Crescent City. I think there should be a banner for the farmer's market. One reason, it's hidden. That parking lot, if you don't know where it is, it's hard to find. And that's one of the complaints that people have made. So signage and a banner would help improve that problem.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Oh, yes, ma'am. Please state your name.
Thank you. This is Billy K. Gavin Tiger. I'm secretary of the downtown divas. First of all, I wanted to tell you that we've already organized a cleanup day for the parking lot on May fourteenth. I was in contact with Eric Weir today, and we're also meeting on Wednesday to walk the space, get an idea of how the city can partner with us and what we can do to merge all of that together and make it great. And we are really excited and thank you for this consideration. Going forward, we're excited to partner with the city and continue improving that area on the radar. And why we asked for the five hundred that wasn't going to be utilized to hold for a future potential bid was to reinvest itself in the market since all that money was market-related. And to answer your question, Darren, the system that we looked at more than five years ago was more than ten thousand dollars. So that money, we knew could never buy a full system. We just wanted to throw some money towards an idea that seemed to be, everybody was on board with, that would be a great thing. So I don't know what that looks like in the city's future, but however you want to use that money, if you want to use it down towards our way, where we're gonna need more power and stuff, that would be great too. But thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Billy.
Is there any other public comment? Okay, seeing no other public comment, I'll close up public comment and bring it back to the council for any further discussion, comments, motions?
I move to approve resolution number two thousand sixteen dash twelve, a resolution of the city council of the city of Crescent City, allocating a portion of the fund balance and assets of the suspended downtown business improvement district.
I'll second that.
All right. Any further discussion? Nope. Okay. Please pull the vote.
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Pro Tim Inscore?
Yes.
Mayor Gassman?
Yes, and that passes unanimously. And we're all looking forward to see the farmer's market, June first, to be down there, starting at ten AM, going to two. Everybody don't miss it. Well, it's only eight.
Nine.
Nine to two?
Nine to two.
You already missed an hour of it.
Hey, well, I don't get up that early. All right, thank you very much. Um, that concludes our business on our agenda. We are now at the city council items. We have legislative matters. Is there any legislative matters anybody wishes to discuss? Mr. Knight? No?
No specific legislation to discuss. I did want to give council a heads up. As you're probably aware, you know, gas tax money has been shrinking, and money for our streets and roads have been shrinking at the state level. Certainly, there's a lot of, a lot of interaction at the state level to try and find solutions to the issue that we all have. The League of Cities has a fix our roads coalition, which I intend to dive into a little bit and be involved in, as I'm sure our public works director will too. And then there's a number of other funding proposals. One is from the governor's office, so I'll be looking into that. And I'll come back to council and try and update you with some more specifics. So certainly, your staff supports any additional money for our streets and roads.
Thank you. Anything else? Anybody? Catherine? No? Okay, we're on now to city managers' report. Anything there?
Nothing to report, ma'am.
All right, thank you very much. Reports, concerns, referrals, council travel, training reports. Who wants to go first? Mr. Short.
Well, after your last city council meeting, I had a doctor's appointment out of town. So I missed the Redwood Coast Transit Authority meeting, participated in the Kidtown Cleanup on the twenty-third. It was a great success. There was sixty-plus people there, including little kids, shoveling, shoveling chips and moving them all. That was a great time had by all. Only took us about an hour and a half. We were, we were thinking about three hours, but we did it pretty fast. On the twenty-seventh, participated in the tri-agency economic development meeting. And on the twenty-eighth, I had a special meeting of the Transportation Commission.
All right. Thank you. Catherine?
Thank you. Let's see, on the twenty-fifth, we had a local agency formation commission meeting. And, um, can't remember what we did. No, it was, it was a short meeting. And on the twenty-seventh, I had the honor of being invited, I think, I'm not, I'm sure I, probably almost all of us were invited, to the Delmark Youth Council and Friday Night Live Club Town Hall Meeting on underage drinking at, at the school district boardroom. And it was a great meeting. They did a really good presentation on how underage drinking affects our community and brainstormed possible short and long-term strategies to improve the community awareness. So that was a really good meeting. And on the twenty-eighth, we had a local transportation commission meeting where we approved the ten thousand dollars to spend for a grant consultant on our front street project for the coastal trail. And that had gone through the city council already. And on the twenty-ninth, we had the economic summit, which I've mentioned a couple of times. But to me, I mentioned it a couple of times tonight already, but I felt like it was the best economic summit that I've attended so far. So I thought it was really, really good. A lot of good information. And other than that, I've been pretty busy with my, my campaign. I attended two candidates forums. So that's it for me.
Thank you. Mr. Inscore?
Forgot one thing I wanted to mention. I'm sorry. I also attended the Board of Supervisors meeting where they had a presentation by the North Coast Region of the Water Quality Control Board and regarding the Smith River and the special designation for the outstanding rivers. And I was really concerned about a couple of supervisors misunderstanding the letter that we had sent. So thank you, Kimmy, for sending copies of our letter that we sent to Oregon regarding support of the process for the designation on the Oregon side of the border for the Smith River. Because I don't know where the supervisors had the misunderstanding. They, they suggested that we were premature and bamboozled into sending that letter. And so I had, I asked Kimmy to send the copy, a copy of the letter to the Board of Supervisors. So if we need to send any other letters, I don't know if we had copied the Board of Supervisors in that, that letter that we sent, but maybe that would be a good idea because they weren't very favorable. And like you were there, you, you know where they got that idea? Because I was really alarmed by their, by what they were saying. And so, anyway, that concerned me a great deal because I want us to be good partners with the county.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to, to weigh in on that. You, you want to, Mr. Holly, maybe you want to go ahead and just do your, do your report out with your activities first, would that be good?
I could, I could do it briefly. The, the tri-agency meeting and the tri-agency, actually, it's consistent with the discussion here that we're just about to embark on. There was a presentation given by some people at the tri-agency meeting that, that expressed significant concerns over, over the special designation and the city's support of that designation. And I, I think the concerns were serious enough that I'm interested in taking another look. And, and, and we'll be doing some additional research, some of us. And, and, and we'll be doing some additional research, some of us. But it's, it's, we are a bit at odds with the county on this particular issue. And I do think we need to find out more, and we need to be very cautious as we move forward, based upon what I heard the other day in the Tri-Agency. So I know that we're going to revisit this in a minute. I will say that we discussed a number of things at that Tri-Agency meeting, and it's kind of exciting, actually. Tri-Agency, in the four years that I've been sitting on Tri-Agency, four and a half years now, it, it has a good feeling about it. I think we're moving forward, and we're doing some good discussions about economic development. One issue or one interest that Tri-Agency has is maybe doing some kind of a survey, looking at the amount of dollars spent on tourism and the, and the payback. I guess one was done in 2006, and it's time to update that. So we're, we're going to be looking at possibly funding something like that. And so it's, it's, it's a good place to go now, and I hope we meet on a regular basis. We're continuing to talk about businesses that could come in and take advantage of our improved infrastructure with technology. And, and so there's some far-reaching things that could happen with that group if we just keep moving forward. So I, I too attended the, or attended the Transportation Commission meeting on the 28th, and really, the sole reason for that meeting was to consider a proposal to grant the city $10,000 to assist with the beachfront grant that we, we actually approved at the last meeting. So, and that was approved, so that's the good news from that group, and they're very supportive of the city's efforts. So that's pretty much it. I had a pretty quiet time. Thank you.
We had a solid Waste Management Authority meeting that I attended, along with the Board of Directors for the Chamber of Commerce. I too joined Councilmember Short at the Kid Town Cleanup, and that was an awesome experience. I attended the Crescent City Women's Club, their final, their final thing. And Councilmember Short, his wife was there. They've been celebrating their 100th anniversary all year, and so they had their final.
Not final, finale of their 100 years. They're keeping, they're keeping on going.
Okay. The end of, the end of this year's celebration, centennial celebration. Is that correct now?
Yes, sir.
Yes. That was very, they all, they were wearing their fancy hats, and it was just a wonderful time to, to be with them. What else? Other regular meetings. We had a LAFCO meeting. We're continuing with some reviews there and some other issues that we're going to be addressing. And attended the economic summit. So as far as the, in, in response to Catherine's question and Mr. Holly's Rick's question, we will, I do, I, I think I understand in some ways the county's apprehension or questioning of, of our action and having received some information from local stakeholders, as well as regional stakeholders, and also meeting with the North Coast Regional Water Quality Board the morning after their presentation at the Board of Supervisors, along with our interim city manager, our utilities manager, and our public works director. I too am, am very concerned. I was concerned when we sent the letter, and my concerns, I will say, are greater now than they were two weeks ago. And I think that, from my perspective, had I received, and I don't say this to all staff, because staff didn't have all this, but if I had all the information two weeks ago that I've received from people now, I would have been more adamant about saying that I couldn't support the, the, the letter that we sent. Part of that is, is because regardless of how well-crafted you make a letter, a lot of that is determined by how it's presented, when it's presented by a person who has it. And I think that, that there is at least a possibility that the implication is that the city is in favor of this designation, not that we are in favor of, of establishing the rules to determine that. And I think that that's part of the disconnect, is the implication is that the city is in favor of identifying the, the north fork of the Smith River as an outstanding resource water, which then connects, from an Oregon standpoint to a national standpoint, of identifying it as a, as a national resource.
So you're saying that they would distort our letter, even though that, who would, who would be doing that? I mean, I don't see how that can happen if they're, if we say we're supporting the establishment of rules. I, I don't understand.
Well, number one, I'm not sure that, that, that any of us fully understood the process of what Oregon was doing. We did, we did not, the, the, even what was going before the Department of Environmental Quality in the state of Oregon, we didn't, we didn't look at this process. It was a 73-page petition that, that we didn't look at to see what was even being petitioned. We didn't, none of, not, at least not that I know of. I did not read it in advance. I didn't know what we were petitioning. And there were stakeholders that, that we didn't, we didn't hear from as far as even the process of establishing these rules. Now, the Department of Environmental, Oregon Environmental Quality Commission has chosen, as I understand it, from looking at their records, to not take action as of yet. But given the complexity of this issue, given all the information that I have received, and I don't know what the proper procedure is for doing this, but it would be my opinion with the questions that I have, that, that we would draw the letter that we have sent. That would be, and I don't know if that needs to be, come on a future agenda. It was not taken, it was taken as a consensus item. But I, I firmly believe that, that we were out in front of something that we did not possess enough information on. And I think we should withdraw the letter of support that we have, that we have given until this can be fully, fully vetted by our staff. And, and I do believe, as Councilmember Murray said, that we do need to be working together with, with the county. And I think that if we were all at the table, listening to all of this, maybe we would have come to a different conclusion, all of us together. Which, it's unfortunate that we made a decision the night before the presentation. To me, I think, I mean, I, I didn't fully understand the North Coast.
But no, that was, that was the state of California, though. This was Oregon.
It's all connected.
No, we didn't say the whole basin either in our letter.
But it will all be connected. Once, once the, this, this designation is made, because it, it's going to, it's going to flow down. The river's going to flow down. And, and the, the, the North Coast Regional Water Quality Board is looking to see what's going to happen in Oregon. They are looking at coordinating these efforts. And I firmly believe that, that we got out in front of something we should not have got out in front of until we really did better research. And some of that was time and, and it being, but, but even that, these, these requests for, for weighing in on what happened in Oregon, some of these requests to different organizations were made last fall. This could have come to us last fall. The National Park Service, because I was given a copy of the letter there at the Visitor Bureau last month, they weighed in on this in October. So some of this could have come to us to be looking at and vetting months ago, as opposed to feeling like we were under the gun. You need to make a decision because the meeting is in two days. So again, I, I, just looking at all of this, I firmly believe that we need to withdraw this letter and relook at this, this whole issue more, more fully, be going forward.
If I could interject, we were told by Representative Smith River Alliance that, you know, we're, we're already designated as a wild and scenic river. Why would we need to have the ONRW designation?
But, but no, we're not talking about that right now.
And then we come to find out that in March of 2015, the Water Quality Control Plan for the North Coast, North Coast Region includes, as their fourth priority, to designate the Smith River Basin, the entire basin, as an ONRW. So I, I can't help but think that, that representative of the Smith River Alliance knew that. As person that is that entrenched in our water quality, I think we were deliberately misled. And for us to submit a letter in support to start the rulemaking process is a way for that representative to go to Portland and say, "Look, I got a letter from Crescent City saying that they, they like the idea." And I wholeheartedly agree with Mr. Enscore that we should do everything in our power to rescind this, write another letter saying we made a mistake because the designation of the entire Smith River Basin as an ONRW would be devastating to our economy.
Well, I was at that supervisor meeting, too, when I saw the whole presentation, so that's, that's one issue. But I think the rulemaking process is a separate issue. I, I don't think that that's making the designation. I think that that's completely separate, which is...
You know, I, I will, I will say in anticipation of this perhaps coming up today, I, I looked through our whole meeting, I, I, or not the whole meeting, but I saw that portion of the last city council meeting where we had this discussion. And I didn't hear Mr. Werschel make any reference to California getting so far along on the process. I did hear Mr. Weir say that, that California had started the process and then backed off for now. He, he did say that at the very beginning of his presentation. Now, Mr. Werschel also mentioned that, in that, in that recording, for everybody to hear, that if it were to include the, the lower river as being, getting the same designation, and he was telling, I think it was the farm people from Smith River, he was saying he would not support such a designation at that time. That's what he said in public at our last city council meeting. So that would be interesting to watch. But I too think that it may be worth revisiting. And that's part of what we do at this point of the agenda, is talk about what we want to do in the future, and...
Before we, I mean, maybe it would be good to ask them to come, the Water Regions, Regional Water Quality Control Board to do a presentation to our council.
Yeah, that's one way to revisit it.
I think that might be helpful. Because what I heard them present and then was one thing, and then what other people that made public comment seemed to be an entirely different thing when, when they were making comments. Because, I, maybe it would be helpful if we asked them to come and do a presentation for us.
That would probably be helpful. I think, I think that we all are concerned about our city water supply, also our local economy with recreation plus farming, because the river affects everybody that's on it and downstream of it. So the main thing is that I remember, I had some reservations, too, because that's usually how the slippery slope happens. It's designated in one, one state and then flows down to the other, and then it affects our economy. But the main thing is, we need to protect our water supply because if they designate the river where we cannot do any construction or repairs on our rainy collector, we could not update our water supply, and then we're looking at wells and a different thing.
But that's not what I, I heard at the presentation.
That is correct, but there, there is concerns from the other members of this council that it's, it's going that direction. And so, I mean, I didn't have any problems with the letter that we sent for the rulemaking process, but I can see it. If it starts going down on this side, we have to be adamant in our approach and, and together on our consensus of that we need to protect our river and our rainy collector and our water supply, so.
So maybe it'd be good if they came and did a presentation.
I would think that'd be a good thing. And if we can direct the city manager to maybe get a request in there and to have him come in there and explain, you know, what their future plans are for our river and our base.
And the impacts of such a designation.
Yes, certainly, we can make that contact.
In the interim, I still believe we need to take action on what I believe was a mistake that we made by submitting that letter. I, I watched the presentation, I, I wasn't at the meeting, but on the recording. And it, there was questions asked, like you say, in public comment. Somebody concerned was added layer of red tape in the way that, I forget the lady's name, Alita, but she said it wasn't, it wouldn't be an added layer. The way she worded it was, there would just be a refinement of the standards, which, to me, that's an added layer of red tape. So she, she seemed to, I don't know, be, I thought, evasive. I, I don't support them going through with, with this ONRW designation. I don't think we should indicate that we are in favor of them starting the process, especially when we don't even know how specifically it will affect our future.
That's why I think it'd be a good idea if we had the presentation, and then we can decide what, I mean, otherwise, we're going to look like we don't know what we're doing.
I think we've already done that.
Yeah.
I personally feel like we've already done that.
I disagree.
We did, we did, we did not have enough information to take the action that we took. This was not a specific item like it was when we weighed in on a specific...
I disagree.
Well, you can disagree if you want to, that's okay.
Yeah, I did, I, I am.
Okay, that's fine. But when we took action before, it was about a specific interest, a specific person wanting to do mining, and we addressed a specific issue. This is a general concern, and I think it is very naive for us to think that, that starting the process in Oregon for an outstanding resource water is somehow not connected to us in California looking at ONRW. I think it would be naive to think that these two things are not connected in some fashion. They, they have to be. We're talking about the same body of water. These items are connected. We should do more research. And in the meantime, especially since we have gotten a reprieve, in a sense, from the Oregon Environmental Quality Commission that they have not taken action yet, then I think it is wise on our part to bring back that letter, withdraw the letter that we have. I'm certainly in favor. I, I met with the North Coast Regional Water Quality Board, and they answered good questions. I thought we had a very productive meeting with the city staff the following morning. I would look forward to them coming up and informing us more. I think that's a great idea. But at the same time, I, I think that this letter needs to be withdrawn. And I don't know what, how, what the formal action, I guess, we'd ask for attorney with it.
Here's, here's what we're going to do. We're, I'm going to poll the council, and we're going to see what the consensus is about rescinding the letter and bringing it back and for more discussion, and then drafting another one. So, Mr. Short?
I move we rescind.
Mr. Enscore?
Yes, rescind the letter.
Ms. Murray?
No.
Mr. Holly?
I think we need more information as well. I say we can rescind it.
And I say we rescind it. So the majority of the council believes that we should rescind the letter and then get some more information.
So we hear you.
All right, thank you very much.
Looks like we're still on that, that part of the agenda where...
Where referrals.
Where you can direct staff to place a matter on a future agenda.
Yeah, thank you.
Does that need to be, means it wasn't on the agenda, does that need to be a consensus emergency item?
It was just a poll of consensus.
And confirmed with the attorney, I don't, I think we can take the consensus to rescind the letter. Certainly, if council also wants us to come back with more information of future dates separate of the recension, then we could do that, too.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, let's see, I have to do my report. I was at a Del Norte Solid Waste Management meeting, Redwood Transit Authority. We had a transition between our old director and our new director, Mr. Short. It was good. They're starting to take over. We might actually have a meeting next month instead of like, or this month, instead of waiting until June, so.
Can you, who's your new director?
It's, it's a, a pair of people, Heron Consulting and, who's the other guy? I'd have to look it up, but yeah, we have, we have two other, they're new, so I'm just trying to get them. And then I also was at the Town Hall Meeting on Underage Drinking in Delano County, which was very educational. And I did make a comment and say, "Hey, where are all the..."
are all the guys?" Because there were a lot of girls there. And it's like, "Come on, guys, get involved. Let's, let's, let's see it." It's, it's, you know, it's not a single-gender thing.
That's the way Councilman Enscore and I felt at the Women's Society, or Women's Club.
It's the Women's Club. I mean, what do you expect? So, yeah. But they're always, they're fun. The Women's Club is a fun place to go. Okay.
I will just say, talking about being fun, is when all of a sudden, when, when somebody addresses you at the Crescent City Women's Club and says, "Well, we'd like this Councilman Enscore to lead us in our song." And not knowing what our song is, I was sitting there horrified for a moment. And then I was at least given a cue of what our song was, and it was "America the Beautiful." But I'm thinking, I, I'm pretty sure I can do verse one. I'm hoping that we're done at the end of-
That's when you know you're in or not.
Yes. So I do now know what our song is. And I was very happy to sing with them.
Good job. You just have to get the first few bars and hum along.
That's right. It was wonderful.
All right. There being no further business before this council, we will adjourn till a regularly scheduled meeting on May 16th, 2016, at 6:00 PM. Thank you very much. Everybody have a good evening.